Let us pray. Help us to look to the past with gratitude and to the future with hope. We remember this day, those who have gone before us, who have labored not for themselves alone, but with a vision of building for the future, a world better than they had known. Inspire in us also a like vision that we too might labor for things beyond ourselves, that ourselves might be dedicated to high purposes and grand horizons. Make us unafraid of hopes and dreams, release us from cynicism and despair. Teach us to be realistic about our limitations, but never to lose hope in our potential to transcend them. Amen.
Amen. Amen. All right. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Dr. Whibley. Mr. Riddick, you missed that.
You missed it. You missed it.
Oh, you missed it. Thank you. I'm sorry, that's it.
That was good, too.
That's it.
She gets to do that time as well.
Okay, all right, okay, all right, okay.
Clerk will call the roll, please.
Ms. Graves?
Here.
Ms. Johnson?
Here.
Mr. Protogiru?
Here.
Mr. Riddick?
Here.
Mr. Smigiel?
Here.
Dr. Whibley?
Here.
Mr. Frame?
Here. The motion is to excuse Mr. Wynn, please.
Ms. Graves?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiru?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigiel?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye. The motion is to dispense with the reading of the minutes of the previous meeting, please.
Ms. Graves?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiru?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigiel?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the Norfolk City Council Chambers. We're glad to have all of you here. To the benefit of those of you who do not regularly attend our council sessions, the process which we're going to follow tonight is the first thing on the agenda is the invitation to bid on a parking agreement. We'll take that up first. After that, we'll move directly to the regular agenda items. We have thirty-three or thirty-four regular agenda items, and we're going to vote on all these matters in just the way they are numbered on the printed docket. If anyone wants to address the council on any of these matters, and a number of you have signed up, all you needed to do was sign a slip of paper which the clerk has made available in the lobby behind the council chambers before the meeting began at the conclusion of the regular agenda. If you'd like to address the council on new business, you'll be given that opportunity. But again, you must have signed a slip of paper that the clerk made available. So there are no ceremonial matters where we got, where we're going to move directly then into the invitation to bid. Mr. Clerk?
Yes, sir. This is an item for the receipt of bids pursuant to invitation to bid and notice of public hearing to accept bids for a long-term garage parking agreement with a term of twenty years for the lease of four hundred parking spaces in the parking garage located at 130 Bank Street in the city of Norfolk, subject to certain terms and conditions.
All right. How many bids have been received?
One.
Please read the bid and mark it for identification.
City Walk One LLC has submitted the following bid, and the bid is for leasing four hundred spaces in the parking garage located at 130 Bank Street in the city of Norfolk. I've marked it for identification as City Walk One LLC Bid 2916.
Thank you. Are there any other bids? Any other additional bids? Okay, if there are no additional bids, I will declare the bid enclosed. Is there any member of the public who wishes to be heard on this matter? There are no member, if there is no member of the public who wishes to be heard, I will declare the public hearing closed. Is there a recommendation from the city staff regarding the bid received from City Walk One LLC?
Yes, city staff recommends that the bid by City Walk One LLC be accepted and the parking garage agreement awarded to City Walk One LLC.
Okay, is there any discussion? If there's no discussion, I will ask the city clerk to read the proposed ordinance.
An ordinance accepting the bid submitted by City Walk One LLC for a long-term garage parking agreement with a term of twenty years for the lease of four hundred parking spaces in the parking garage located at 130 Bank Street, city of Norfolk. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Ms. Graves?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiru?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigiel?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye. Thank you. R1, please.
R1 is an ordinance approving an encroachment agreement with EDR Enterprises, Inc., doing businesses Pimento Island Bistro for property located at 1902 Colly Avenue. This was continued from the January 26 meeting.
Okay, we ready to vote? Okay, you call the roll, please.
Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Ms. Graves?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiru?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigiel?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye. R2.
A resolution to designate the area to the east of St. Paul's Boulevard, to the south of East Princess Anne Road, Golf Street and St. Julian Avenue, to the west of Roberts Road and Park Avenue, and to the north of Holt Street in the southernmost portion of Tidewater Drive in the city of Norfolk as the Greater St. Paul's revitalization area.
Right, and now there's been a request from the administration to withdraw the matter, so the motion is to withdraw, please.
Ms. Graves?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiru?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigiel?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye. R3.
An ordinance authorizing the city of Norfolk to enter into a cooperation agreement for the payment of certain funds to enable the Economic Development Authority of the city of Norfolk to enter into and fulfill its obligations under a grant amendment with ADP LLC.
There are four members of the public who have signed up to address the council on this matter. When I call your name, if you come to the podium, identify yourself for the record by giving us your full name, please, and your present home address, and then please limit your remarks to three minutes. Chuck McPhillips.
Honorable members of council, I'm Chuck McPhillips, president of Greater Norfolk Corporation. I'm here to express our strong support for this agenda item, and at this point, I'd like to turn it over to Barry Bishop, the executive director of Greater Norfolk Corporation, to make more detailed remarks in support of this.
That'd be fine.
Thank you.
Mr. Bishop.
Good evening. To say that we would welcome automatic data processing to Norfolk in the region with open arms would be an understatement. Start with the fact that ADP, as you know, is the 251st on the Fortune 500 list of largest U.S. companies, the largest provider of human resource services in North America, Europe, Latin America, and the Pacific Rim, handling payrolls for one in six American workers, a company with a sterling credit rating, double A by Most Standard and Poor's and Moody's, a company with a total of fifty-five thousand employees, two thousand of whom, according to the pilot, would be here in downtown Norfolk, and a company, I might add, with an exceptional reputation. The top-rate company in financial data services in Fortune magazines, the most, the world's most admired companies in 2015, Chief Executive Magazine, forty best companies for leaders' list, Diversity, Inc. magazine's top fifty companies for diversity, Working Mother magazines, a hundred best companies for working mothers, best companies for multicultural women, IDG Computer World magazine, listed best places to work in information technology. It could go on and on. But to quote the Virginia Pilot editorial over the weekend, "What would be the largest economic development achievement in Hampton Roads in decades suggests a brighter economic future for Norfolk and by extension for all of Hampton Roads." According to the pilot, ADP found itself drawn to downtown Norfolk for its wild workforce, its community's growing vibrancy, and its relatively affordable cost of living. The editorial goes on to say that "supporting and enabling those things are the nearby colleges and universities, ODU, Tidewater Community College, Norfolk State, a growing critical mass of tech-framed millennials, and interconnected creative community, including the neon arts district, housing options that conclude new, adapted, and historic transportation alternatives that include light rail, walkable streets, and increasingly bike-friendly paths." And I guess maybe the point I'd like to make is, all of this was made possible because of decisions that this council made and councils made before you. As the Pilot editorial concludes, Norfolk's investments in downtown and its mission as a 21st-century city appear poised to make a difference for the city's future. That's all any place could hope for, and to which we say we could not agree more.
Thank you. Rodney Jordan?
Good evening, Rodney.
Good evening, Rodney Jordan, 2506 Myrtle Avenue. I'd like to first echo the comments that were made. Before me, I think this is a excellent economic development project for the city, and I'd like to congratulate the council and administration, all those who have been involved with it. There are two additional items I would like for the council and administration to consider moving forward, having read the agreement that you worked out with, with the Economic Development Authority. One, to the extent that there are community benefits agreements that can ensure that if there are opportunities for new jobs, that those new jobs can go towards Norfolk residents, and that we particularly target those neighborhoods and those areas where we know we have workforce development, training opportunities, as well as any opportunity for small, historically underutilized businesses to also engage in contracting opportunities with this, with this company. I think it's important, since we are providing these types of incentives, that we also look for ways that we can grow our small business community as a part of that. The second item, as you have realized taxes, as the city has realized taxes, one of the things that this council created coming out of the Poverty Commission was the Housing Trust Fund. And we've had this continually conversation about trying to have workforce housing in all parts of the city. As you know, right now, we tend to concentrate our low-income housing in one part of the city and not necessarily have housing opportunities across the city. So to the extent that you can look at earmarking parts of the revenue that may come off of this project to the Housing Trust Fund to provide additional workforce housing and affordable opportunities in Super Ward 6 and in other parts of the city that right now may not have a fair share of opportunity, I would also like to encourage you to do that as well. Congratulations again.
That's a good idea.
Thank you, Rodney. Thank you.
Can we have Marcus model that for us if possible? He can figure out solutions on that. Can you do that, Marcus? Just perform and figure things out, such as that.
Yeah, I like it.
Okay. Mary Miller?
Marcus.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of city council. My name is Mary Miller, president of the Downtown Norfolk Council. Home address is 7600 Glen Eagles Road, Norfolk. I urge your approval of this ordinance tonight that will incentivize a significant number of jobs in our city. This opportunity will benefit Norfolk neighborhoods and the Hampton Roads region by diversifying our economy, enhancing our reputation as a global competitor, and most importantly, validating the trends that younger people and millennials are choosing to locate in the urban core to live, to work, and to play. Norfolk's leadership has held to a long-term vision implemented through strong planning principles and strategic investment. ADP's interest in Norfolk reinforces that this thoughtful approach supports our collective goal of being the most dynamic and authentic urban waterfront in the, in the United States. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary. I'd also like to acknowledge Brian Stevens, please, from the Hampton Roads Chamber of Commerce.
Mr. Mayor, city council, thank you very much for this opportunity. Brian Stevens, 500 East Main Street. The Hampton Roads Chamber of Commerce and the entire business community, I think, supports, supports this. I personally know about ADP. It's a very reputable company. ADP has facilitated my finances and other companies, and I can tell you, it's an outstanding workforce. One thing that I will say in addition to what my colleagues have said already is that this is an opportunity also for some of our transitioning military to find good, high-paying jobs right here in Norfolk. And I know from talking to the mayor and some of the city council members, we want to keep as many of these transitioning military here in Hampton Roads, here in Norfolk, as possible, so it would be another opportunity. So I wholeheartedly agree with this, support my colleagues, and, and hope we get this approved. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Brian. Okay, that concludes the list of folks who have signed up to speak. All right, you can call the roll, please.
Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Ms. Graves?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiru?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigiel?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye. R4.
An ordinance granting a special exception authorizing the operation of an entertainment establishment with alcoholic beverages known as Peck and Pour, work-class wings and beer on property located at 1310 Colly Avenue. By seven-zero vote, Planning Commission recommends approval. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Ms. Graves?
Before I say that, I would like to, we often have a lot of these restaurants, Marcus is walking out of the door. We often have a lot of these restaurants that come to us that are small businesses, and I know that we often have caterers who cater our dinner. I really would like to see us reach out to some of the small restaurants that come before us and give them an opportunity. I mean, we do pay, it's not voluntary that they give, that they give us dinner. So we, it would be nice if some of those small restaurants could obtain city contracts and get on that rotation of the dinner providers for the council.
You are really meddling now. You know, that's...
You know, I'm just saying, it shouldn't be a limited few. But anyway, and we, we know Pollard's is not going off the list, but we need to add some people to the list and make sure we get a nice, well-rounded number of folks that are able to provide services for the city and be paid by the city. So, anyway, I vote aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiru?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigiel?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye. R5.
An ordinance granting a special exception to permit the operation of a commercial drive-thru for Chick-fil-A on property located at 1205 North Military Highway. By seven-zero vote, Planning Commission recommends approval.
Mr. Hines is here to answer any questions, if we have any, from Warrenton. Thank you. Okay.
Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Ms. Graves?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiru?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigiel?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye. R5.
An ordinance granting a special exception to permit the operation of a commercial drive-thru for Chick-fil-A on property located at 1205 North Military Highway. By seven-zero vote, Planning Commission recommends approval.
Mr. Hines is here to answer any questions, if we have any, from Warrenton. Thank you. Okay.
Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Ms. Graves?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiru?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigiel?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye. R7 and 7A, please.
R7 is an ordinance granting a special exception authorizing the operation of an entertainment establishment with alcoholic beverages known as Tapit Local on property located at 244 Granby Street. And for both items, Planning Commission recommends approval by seven-zero vote.
Mr. Hens here to answer any questions, as is the applicant, Mr. McGrath. Okay.
Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Ms. Graves?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiru?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigiel?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye. R8.
An ordinance granting a special exception authorizing the sale of alcoholic beverages for off-premises consumption at an establishment known as Tapit Local on property located at 244 Granby Street. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Ms. Graves?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiru?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigiel?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye. R8.
An ordinance granting a special exception authorizing the operation of an entertainment establishment with alcoholic beverages known as Glass Wheel Studio on property located at 116 to 128 West Alney Road. By seven-zero vote, Planning Commission recommends approval. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Ms. Graves?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiru?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigiel?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye. R8.
An ordinance granting a special exception authorizing the operation of an entertainment establishment with alcoholic beverages known as Tapit Local on property located at 244 Granby Street. And for both items, Planning Commission recommends approval by seven-zero vote.
Mr. Hens here to answer any questions, as is the applicant, Mr. McGrath. Okay.
Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Ms. Graves?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiru?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigiel?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye. R10.
An ordinance granting a special exception authorizing the operation of an entertainment establishment with alcoholic beverages known as Granny's Country Cooking on property located at 628 35th Street, Suites 636A and B. By seven-zero vote, Planning Commission recommends approval.
And Mr. Randy Baker's here to answer questions. Thank you. Okay.
Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Ms. Graves?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiru?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigiel?
Sounds good. Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye. R11.
And Granny's is one of those restaurants. We need to get on the rotation, too. So you see, brag, after this, it's over.
Okay, thank you. All right, R11.
An ordinance granting a special exception authorizing the operation of an entertainment establishment with alcoholic beverages known as Juice Bar Juices on property located at 245 Granby Street, Suite 247. By seven-zero vote, Planning Commission recommends approval.
Okay, Rick is here to answer questions again. Okay, call the roll.
Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Ms. Graves?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiru?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigiel?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye. R12 and 12A.
An ordinance granting a special exception authorizing the operation of an eating and drinking establishment named Lamia's Crepes on property located at 401 Granby Street, Suite B. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Ms. Graves?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiru?
The, the town of Lamia is, is just outside of Thermopylae in Greece, where the Greeks held back the, with three hundred Spartans held back the Persians. I just thought that that would just be a historic thing for everybody to know. But that being said, aye, of course. And I missed the accent.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigiel?
Isn't he supposed to abstain?
Okay.
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Marcus, are some of these restaurants part of Vibrant Spaces?
Yes.
That's what I thought. So this is a really great example, and I hope you all recognize that of the work that's been done with DNC and with Drew on getting these businesses off the ground. Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye.
12A is an ordinance granting a special exception authorizing the sale of alcoholic beverages for off-premises consumption at an establishment known as Lamia's Crepes on property located at 401 Granby Street. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Ms. Graves?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiru?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigiel?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye. R13, please.
An ordinance granting a special exception to permit the operation of a commercial drive-thru for Steak 'n Shake on property located at 2437 East Little Creek Road. By seven-zero vote, Planning Commission recommends approval.
Right.
Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Ms. Graves?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiru?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigiel?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye. R14.
An ordinance granting a special exception authorizing the operation of an eating and drinking establishment named Starbucks on property located at 7550 Granby Street, Suite 10.
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye. R14.
An ordinance granting a special exception authorizing the operation of an eating and drinking establishment named Starbucks on property located at 7550 Granby Street, Suite 10. Dispense with the charter requirement, reading the ordinance and adopt. Ms. Graves?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Protogirou?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye. R17.
An ordinance granting a special exception authorizing the operation of an eating and drinking establishment named Lama Garden on property located at 441 Granby Street. Dispense with the charter requirement, reading the ordinance and adopt. Ms. Graves?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Protogirou?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye. R18.
And Granny's is one of those restaurants. We need to get on the rotation, too. So you see, Rick, after this, it's over.
Okay, thank you. All right, R11.
An ordinance granting a special exception authorizing the operation of an entertainment establishment with alcoholic beverages known as Juice Bar Juices on property located at 245 Granby Street, Suite 247. By 7-0 vote, Planning Commission recommends approval.
Okay, Rick is here to answer questions again. Okay, call the roll.
Dispense with the charter requirement, reading the ordinance and adopt. Ms. Graves?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Protogirou?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye. R13, please.
An ordinance granting a special exception to permit the operation of a commercial drive-thru for Steak 'n Shake on property located at 2437 East Little Creek Road. By 7-0 vote, Planning Commission recommends approval. Dispense with the charter requirement, reading the ordinance and adopt. Ms. Graves?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Protogirou?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye. R14.
An ordinance granting a special exception authorizing the operation of an eating and drinking establishment named Starbuck's on property located at 7550 Granby Street, Suite 10. Dispense with the charter requirement, reading the ordinance and adopt. Ms. Graves?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Protogirou?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye. R18.
An ordinance granting a special exception authorizing the operation of an entertainment establishment with alcoholic beverages known as Elegant Occasions by Cristo on property located at 9605 Granby Street.
Right, and the motion is to continue for two weeks to the next month.
Yes, sir. Okay. Ms. Graves?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
You can say it. Mr. Protogirou?
If we could, just to make sure that it's for a further briefing from the Navy, because I think the individuals are here that are backing this particular project. They were here earlier.
They didn't sign up, okay.
So just to make sure that they understand it's a Navy briefing for us in two weeks.
Well, it's a full... It's a complete briefing from the Navy, but also from the Planning Department as well, and the managers off there. Okay.
I'll agree to the continuance. Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye. R18.
An ordinance granting a special exception to permit the operation of a commercial drive-thru for Chartway Federal Credit Union on property located at 132 Kempfville Road.
And this matter's been requested to continue to February the 23rd.
Yes, sir, two weeks.
Okay.
Ms. Graves?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Protogirou?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye. R18.
An ordinance granting a special exception authorizing the operation of an eating and drinking establishment named Humboldt Steel Corporation II on property located at 150 Bush Street. Dispense with the charter requirement...
Mr. Bowman is here to answer any questions, if we have any. Okay. That's okay, thank you. He'll bring them in.
Reading the ordinance and adopt. Ms. Graves?
Aye.
Everybody's the comedian tonight.
Yeah.
Okay.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Protogirou?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye.
19A is an ordinance granting a special exception authorizing the sale of alcoholic beverages for off-premises consumption at an establishment known as Humboldt Steel Corporation II on property located at 150 Bush Street. Dispense with the charter requirement, reading the ordinance and adopt. Ms. Graves?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Protogirou?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye. Great. R20.
An ordinance granting a special exception to permit a convenience store 24 hours, no fuel sales, known as 7-Eleven on property located at 1877 East Ocean View. And by 7-0 vote, Planning Commission recommends approval.
And we have Mr. Romine here to answer questions, if we have any, along with Steve Blevins. Jim Karides is here, as well as Amanda Schmidt. Okay, call the roll.
Dispense with the charter requirement, reading the ordinance and adopt. Ms. Graves?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Protogirou?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
I've been asking 7-Eleven to space these out a little bit more instead of coming every month, but this is our continuous plan to address the 7-Eleven issues, and they will be tearing down an old 7-Eleven as part of this. So 7-Eleven is working with us on that request, and they are moving into another convenience stores location. So we're eliminating basically one out of this deal. And they have worked with the Civic Leagues on any concerns, as well as the sign. I had a problem with the sign, but they've addressed that, so thank you for working with it.
This isn't the Heritage Bank site.
No, that's... We already approved that. That's under construction now.
That...
Yeah. Aye. This one's on the Bay Side, by the way. This is the one last 7-Eleven that is actually on the beach side of Ocean View, and it will be torn down as part of this.
And it is literally crammed in with...
condos and apartments around it, yeah.
So the one being torn down is the one on the Bay?
Bay, yes.
And this one is on...
Moving across the street, down the road. Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
It hurts me to say aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye. 20A.
20A is an ordinance granting a special exception authorizing the sale of alcoholic beverages for off-premises consumption at an establishment known as 7-Eleven on property located at 1877 East Ocean View Avenue. Dispense with the charter requirement, reading the ordinance and adopt. Ms. Graves?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Protogirou?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye. 21... R21 and R21A.
Yes.
An ordinance granting a special exception authorizing the operation of an entertainment establishment with alcoholic beverages known as O'Connor Brewing Company on property located at 211 West 24th Street. Planning Commission by 7-0 vote recommends approval. Dispense with the charter requirement, reading the ordinance and adopt. Ms. Graves?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Protogirou?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye. R22.
An ordinance granting a special exception authorizing the operation of an entertainment establishment with alcoholic beverages known as Max Barge on property located at 4300 Colley Avenue. By 7-0 vote, Planning Commission recommends approval.
Paul, can I ask something?
Sure. And Rick is here to answer questions, if we have any.
George, the Civic League had made some requests for this property, I guess some demands, and they wanted to make sure... I don't represent this area, but I was contacted.
I actually could clarify some of this if you want.
They wanted to... They wanted to make sure that that language had been included in the new ordinance.
What were they...